I'd like to call to order the public hearing for the South Industrial Special Service Area Public Hearing for January 28th, 2025. Will the village clerk please call the roll for the public hearing on the South Industrial Special Service Area?
President D. Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Fry?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven.
Would the Public Works Director like to give a brief explanation on the proposed South Industrial Special Service Area before we continue the public hearing for a more comprehensive discussion to Tuesday, February 25th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m.?
Yes, thank you. So the Village of Bensonville has identified the South Industrial Business District as an area in need of roadway and utility repairs. Staff has been working with the engineering firm of Baxter and Woodman on a design plan, specifications, and a cost estimate. The proposed scope of work will consist of new concrete pavement, concrete curb and gutter, concrete driveway aprons, excuse me, concrete sidewalks, street light upgrades, street sign replacements, and landscape restoration. Underground utility improvements will consist of a new 12-inch ductal iron water main, new water services into the parkway, sanitary sewer mainlining, and storm sewer upgrades. Any lead services that are found in the project corridor will also be replaced. The village plans to contribute 50% of the total project cost while utilizing a special service area to fund the remaining 50% of the project. The village has been fortunate enough to have a $3 million grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity that we do plan to apply to this project. At this point, we're still working to finalize the numbers and hopefully benefit, that will hopefully benefit the property owners on the final decision on the SSA. So therefore, staff is requesting that we continue this hearing until February 25th at 6 o'clock when we feel we'll have the final details ready to present.
Is there a motion to recess and continue the public hearing to Tuesday, February 25th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. for further discussion on the proposed South Industrial Special Service Area?
You have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
There being a motion, a second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and the public hearing on the proposed South Industrial Special Service Area is continued to Tuesday, February 25th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Now, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the village board for January 28th, 2025. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village clerk, would you please call the roll?
President D. Simone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona?
Here.
Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Fry?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Oh.
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's seven.
We'll move the public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name.
Uh, the first person is Mr., well, James Nylander.
She didn't know if she could call you pastor or mister.
Yes, I'm fine with either. May I humbly request 20 extra seconds?
20 seconds.
Perfect. Thank you. My name is James. I'm a pastor of a local church here in Bensonville and chaplain of the Bensonville Police Department. On December 3rd, an article in the Patch newspaper came out about Bensonville's politics. The information in the article was troubling and raised many questions about our elected officials. Troubled about what I read, I reached out to a village trustee to ask if the information was accurate. I never got a response from the trustee, but 21 minutes later, I received a text message from village president D. Simone, who informed me that he had gotten a phone call from the trustee and so D. Simone offered to answer any questions. I purposely did not contact Frank D. Simone. I wanted to ask one of our board trustees if there was any truth to the news article. I then did have a private meeting with Frank D. Simone, but didn't get any real answers. At the December board meeting, three things happened. One, the board voted to put on the ballot for April 2025 a change to how Bensonville is run from village manager to village president and trustees. Two, we asked the village manager why, we asked why the village manager was fired and why the, why President D. Simone was being potentially offered a job making 135,000 to 150,000 a year. Our elected officials were asked for a public discussion and transparency on these things. Number three, after the board meeting was over, I watched something shocking. All of our elected officials walked in a straight line from their platform out of the meeting to a room locked across the hall, and they didn't stop to talk to any of us. And village president D. Simone was behind the line with his hand on the last board of trustees shoulder, ensuring that no one stopped to talk to us. I now know why the board of trustees didn't contact me and talk with me. I know why the board of trustees didn't stop to talk to any of us. I know why no transparency has been offered to the public, because unfortunately, this is how this administration works. As a pastor and a local citizen, Frank D. Simone came into my church and has tried to intimidate me. Frank went into the Catholic church and tried to intimidate a Catholic priest in Bensonville, who's a friend of mine. Why? Because Frank wanted a program which would have greatly harmed the residents of Bensonville. The Catholic church and priests and I fought against it. The program didn't go. Then came retaliation from one of the people that Frank D. Simone had in his administration, police chief Dan Schultz, who kicked out two chaplains of mine from the police department and shut down a program for us to support the police officers who were being slammed by BLM protests and harmful politicians. Frank D. Simone and Dan Schultz are both police officers at the time, but they didn't care. Later, one of the police officers pulled me aside on a street and asked, "What are, what are us officers gonna do?" Frank D. Simone and police chief Dan Schultz didn't even care about our own police officers, just revenge. But frankly, I already knew there was a problem when I met the police chief for the first time. I went to the police station to invite the chief to a September 11th remembrance, and the police chief declined my invitation and responded that it had been a number of years ago, and I quote, "We didn't know any of them." So that was that. Frank D. Simone, you're not operating in the best interest of Bensonville, and it is obvious that you will do whatever you can to earn big money and have power. The residents of Bensonville need representation that consistently does what's best for the people and not what's rooted in self-interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Foster?
Hello, my name is Susan Foster, and I'm a resident of the Village of Bensonville. The following points have raised my concern. In two short months, we will choose what form of government we want in Bensonville to retain or not to retain the current managerial form. Per the village board meeting minutes of December 4th, and I quote, "We welcome honest, respectful debate on this topic and look forward to presenting this plan in coming months." My question is when in the coming months will this be debated? When in the coming months will this plan be presented? When presented, will you discuss the pros and cons of each form of government and how each form could benefit the residents of Bensonville? Educating constituents before asking them to make such a drastic decision would be the right thing to do, and not at the last minute. For over eight years, this idea has been discussed. It's no secret, per the current president. Why wait to present this referendum after the candidate filing period ended in November? The vote is in two months. We yet to have debate. We yet to have plans presented. If the managerial form of government ceases to be it, it will result in the village president's salary increase to $135,000. We, the residents of Bensonville, deserve answers, and answers in a timely manner. We deserve honesty. We expect honesty and transparency. Remember, the government is to work for us and is accountable to us. In conclusion, in only two short months, we're looking at a potential change in the form of government which could result in an exuberant pay raise for the president. And yet, no debate, no plans have been presented. This idea was presented after the deadline for the candidate's filing. The deadline was in November. Bensonville needs a change, and it must start with the leadership of Bensonville. We need someone to step up and do what's right for this village and for the residents, and not what's in the best interest financially for the politicians. If you want an alternative to the current state of affairs going on in this government, I am your person, and I am announcing my candidacy for the village president of Bensonville. I'm a write-in candidate. My name is Susan Foster. Thank you.
Oh, Marshall's?
Marshall's, Marshall's has an agenda item. He's gonna talk at the agenda.
Alright. I can't even, Peter, Peter.
Is it Peter Cangelosi? Oh?
Pardon me?
Well, okay, Jake, you can go first.
Jake?
Hello, everyone. My name is Jake Portnkirchner. I'm a lifelong resident of Bensonville. I'm excited to be here today to discuss Liberty Fest of 2025 and more specifically, the pyrotechnic display that goes with it. The reason here I am speaking here tonight is to inform the village and board of what I've worked towards to create an opportunity for myself and for my hometown. As a lifelong pyro, I've always been trying to find new ways to push the envelope in this profession and have now completed training under the close supervision of RKM Fireworks and my friend Peter over here to be certified in handling explosives and operating township pyrotechnic displays. I'd love to have the opportunity to donate my time to our community to give Bensonville the best Liberty Fest display that they've ever seen. In doing so, I will also have several pyro assistants like my friend Alex here, Dave and his son, who are also long-term Bensonville village residents who are prepared to donate their time towards doing something we are passionate about for our community. With the backing that Peter and RKM Fireworks gives us, I'm confident that we can make a significant impact on the town staple that is Liberty Fest, Fourth of July Firework Show. RKM has completed the bidding process already for this opportunity. In doing so, we've tried to express exactly what it is that we'd like to do for the Village of Bensonville. We're here tonight to speak our offer to the village directly and openly. From here, I'd like to let Peter take a moment to express some of our local prerequisites and references to ensure confidence in our capabilities and also present an offer for an opportunity to work with us. This is something that I'm very passionate about, and all I ask is for your consideration towards a team that wants to donate their labor for our community. Thank you.
This would be Peter Cangelosi.
Good evening, village president D. Simone and board. My name is Peter Cangelosi. I'm the director of sales and the lead pyrotechnician for RKM Fireworks Company. Several of my guys live in this town, and to be a pyrotechnician, your greatest show that you could do is your own hometown for all your village constituents, people around you, you know, neighbors. So I'm here tonight to offer you guys something that probably no one will ever offer, is a free $57,500 show donated to the village to show you what we could do. It saved you guys $57,000 for your firework show. I have references. Mr. D. Simone, you could talk to Donald Stevens, Skippy Saviano, Franco Calopetrio from Village of Bloomingdale. I give you other references also, but that's what we'd like to do. These guys are dying to do your hometown show, and I could promise you it would be the best show you ever had. So, anyone have any questions?
It's public comment. We don't go back and forth. You could talk to Sean after the meeting if you'd like.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's fine. Is that it?
Uh, yes.
That'll conclude public comment. Marshall will talk when he's called.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from December 17th, 2024? There's a second. Are there any modifications to the minutes? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries and minutes are approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $5,603,958.52. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
Is there any discussions on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and warrant is approved. There are no items on the consent agenda under administration. There is an ordinance of the Village of Bensonville to page Cook County, Illinois, amending section 1-5-4 of chapter 5 of Title 1 of the Bensonville Village Code regarding board of trustee meeting dates. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second. Being a motion and a second, do you have any discussion?
Yes, previously, we were having two board meetings a month, but we hold our entire staff over for these board meetings, even though they work during the day. We looked at this and thought that we could have one board meeting a month. A typical board meeting would be 15 or 20 minutes, so we figure if we stay for a half an hour, we can do all the business that the government has in that month on a single day and make it easier on our staff and more efficient for the people.
Any questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance of the Village of Bensonville to page Cook County, Illinois, amending chapter 7 of Title 1 of the Bensonville Village Code to regulate powers and duties of the village manager. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second discussion?
Again, this limits the authority of the village manager to make purchases in an emergency, so a good example that we had is a boiler went out at the police department. The village manager's spending authority was $10,000. The boiler was $14,000, so it couldn't be approved until we had another board meeting. This will increase that amount to $25,000, because as you all know, since COVID, the cost of everything has gone up. So if we have an emergency and we have to buy something right away, it allows us to approve that purchase and then bring it to the board at their next regular meeting.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Three is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Civic Plus for a village website design service and a not exceeding amount of $13,451. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Is Anthony gonna?
He is.
I'm here.
Oh, go ahead, Anthony. Sorry about that.
Typically, we update the website every five to 10 years. The last update was in 2016. So by the time this project's finished, we'll be right at about 10 years again. We're gonna stay with the same post that we have now, which will make migration of the content much more smooth than what we've had previously. The focus this time is on modernized interface, improved responsiveness across different platforms, streamlined usability, and most importantly, ADA compliance, which has changed over the last 10 years. Staff recommends that we approve the budget expenditure of $13,451.
You said 15 or 13?
$13,451.
Any questions on the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and a resolution is approved. Four is a resolution authorizing replacement of the Village of Bensonville digital storage device and not exceeding $21,000. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Yes.
Being a motion, a second. Who's gonna handle the discussion?
I'll take it. The village has over 200 computers that the employees use to generate work product every day, whether it's body camera footage from the police officers and their police cars to, you know, reports and things that are generated, water billing and whatnot. And the storage, believe it or not, is filling up really fast, so this device will give us more space for the future because the storage device we currently have is almost full.
Any questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Community and Economic Development ordinance approving text amendments to amend Title 10 zoning, chapter 7 uses. You have a motion? Do I have a second? There being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Yes, this is just a minor amendment to our accessory structures in the uses category. So it's for mechanical equipment in industrial districts. We previously did not allow them in interior side yards. There were a couple instances that came up recently where we looked at it. It made a lot of sense. This actually matches our solar mechanical equipment language in the code as well. So just sort of updating one little section of the code to allow a minor change for mechanical equipment in industrial districts only. CDC did recommend to approve this one 5.0.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, ordinance is passed. Two is an ordinance granting a variation solar energy collection system, ground-mounted systems, location at 1010 Foster. Is there a motion to approve?
I have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Discussion?
So this is Sunvest Solar. They actually came before us, and we sent it back down to CDC. We were recommending an aisle on their first location. They, they came back to us with a proposed alternative location, basically closer to the building, not out near the sidewalk in the right of way. It's a much better location, so we were in favor of this one. CDC did recommend approval 5.0.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Three is an ordinance granting an amendment to a planned unit development with code departures for two hotels and a restaurant at lots 2 and 3 of the Sexton redevelopment. Is there a motion to table this ordinance to the next regular board meeting?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, you want to explain why we're tabling it?
Yeah, there's just a couple of outstanding items that were recommended as part of the approval here, so we are basically asking for another 30 days to remedy that, and then we'll come back before the board.
Questions from our board? Call the roll to table.
Okay. Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is tabled. Four is an ordinance approving text amendments to amend Title 9 Building Regulations, chapter 15 Dwelling Inspection Program. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Yeah, so another relatively minor code update. This is in the dwelling inspection program. We call it rental registrar. This is for our rental properties that are required to register with us. So just updating some language in there. State statute calls our program, it's a registration program, not a license program. The, the old text had said license, so we're just updating that to say registration. We're also removing the skip a year language. We actually kind of did away with skip a years, meaning we would only do the rental properties every other year. We did away with those a couple years ago when we went to this new online system for rental registration, and we hired new inspectors, so we basically inspect every rental program, or every rental property every year now. So we're getting rid of the skip a year language, so just cleaning up the code a little bit.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Five is an ordinance approving tax increment financing incentive by and between the Village of Bensonville and Energy VBC Incorporated for the property located at 1005 Commerce Court, Bensonville. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
There's a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Yeah, so I actually ran through this project with you at the last board meeting to get some authorization to actually enter into a redevelopment agreement. So this is basically bringing the ordinance and redevelopment agreement before you. So this is for energy volleyball. This is the second dome, the new dome over at Grand and Commerce. So the, the total TIF eligible work was somewhere north of $1.8 million. We, we approved at the last board meeting authorization to, to give them a $200,000 incentive from the TIF district. That's TIF 4, uh, granted, the Sexton TIF district. So this, this ordinance before is to approve the RDA and the payment for that, for that amount.
Questions from our board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries and ordinance is passed. Six is an ordinance denying a zoning appeal consideration of special use permit motor vehicle repair and/or service at 1081 Entry Drive. Is there a motion? You have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you want to talk first? Do you want to talk after Curtis?
I can give a brief update, and then then we'll let Marshall go. Yeah, so Toy Barn came before us, obviously, and was denied. So they are a, they, they started out as a online auto sales dealership. Basically, you're allowed to, in our code, sell cars online as long as you store them inside, so no, no outdoor display or sales. And they do not have a license to do motor vehicle repair, to work on any vehicles in any fashion. In more recent years, since COVID, the business has changed. They started working on vehicles. They came to us for a special use. We determined that this site isn't the greatest spot for a special use. We've had issues at sites like this in the past, and quite frankly, we've had some issues with Toy Barn in the past, so we were hesitant to expand on their uses. And motor vehicle repair is definitely a different type of use than, than vehicle sales. They appealed our initial denial. We went back to CDC. He obtained Marshall. The CDC did recommend to deny the appeal again, so that's what's before you today. But Marshall has reached out, has some additional information he'd like to present to the board, so.
Thank you, Curtis, and thank you, Mr. President, Village Board. My name is Marshall Suback. I represent the petitioner. If I can briefly approach. I just wanted to supplement the record. To give a brief presentation.
You're not supplementing the record. The record's closed. It was before the zoning board. This is just informational purposes only.
Yes, sir. Informational purposes only.
It's not to be included in the record.
Thank you.
That's fine.
So this is a business that's been in Bensonville for, since 2018. As Curtis said, they originally started with doing just automobile sales. That's what was approved. This is an appeal from the denial for the special use permit to allow for auto repair. Auto repair is allowed in the I-1 district as a special use. The nice thing about a special use is the village keeps control over it, so if it becomes a problem, you can revoke that special use permit, and they can no longer do it. Because the business changed, sales of these cars changed where they started to need work on them. So he initially started doing work and didn't get the special use permit, because he wasn't aware. It was nothing nefarious. He wasn't aware that he had to have a different license or a different special use permit. He always got his business license, and what I passed out, which is just asking you to take into consideration, when he applied for his original business license, he put down auto sales slash auto repair, which was signed off on by staff, because it's required when you do auto sales for the state of Illinois. He has both a rebuilder's license and a sales license. And with the Secretary of State, they require the sign-off. So again, there was nothing nefarious. The business started as just sales, and then with COVID, the business changed. And in order to still run this business, there's repairs that have to be done. I understand what Curtis says, that auto repairs in sites that are smaller cause problems for the Village of Bensonville or have caused problems in the past. The difference is, he's only fixing cars that he sells. He's not fixing my car. So if I bump the village president's car when I leave here tonight and go to get it fixed, I can't bring it to him. I have to bring it to O'Hare Autobody or somebody else, because he's only working on cars that he sells. Last year, he sold about 73 vehicles, and 45 of them needed work. So we're asking that the village board reconsider its consideration and grant this special use permit. He controls the flow of the work, so we don't want to lose this business in town. He's been here since 2018. He's got his entire life savings into this business. His sister is invested into the business. Without this special use permit, he really can't operate here in Bensonville. The village board prior in 2012 granted a special use for this exact location. It was Tiger Autobody who worked there with, to my understanding, no issues. New owner. He's been there since 2018. We're just asking for an opportunity so he can continue the business in Bensonville. He wants to stay here. If he's denied, he's got four employees, two are elderly. They're gonna lose their jobs, and he's gonna have to move, unfortunately, out of Bensonville. And I think it's a business that you should want to keep here, and again, with the special use permit, And I think it's a business that you should want to keep here. And again, with the special use permit, if there is a problem, you guys control it. There's going to be, he doesn't need outside storage because he controls the flow. Again, you and I aren't dropping our cars off here. It's only cars that he's purchasing and selling on his own, so we're asking for reconsideration to grant the appeal and grant the special use permit, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marshall. This board always takes recommendations from staff in the CDC Commission. The CDC Commission is made up of residents of the Village of Bensonville. Their recommendation, what was their recommendation on the denial?
So it was five oh, it was, well, zero to five recommend approval, which means five oh to deny.
And then when it came back?
Same.
Oh, no, actually, that's not accurate. One of the people flipped their votes after they heard my presentation.
So it was zero five and one five or one four?
Correct. But again, staff isn't always right. That board typically follows staff, which is okay. This is, you just got to ask yourself, for this area where the business has been since twenty eighteen, prior board granted this, is this a business we want to operate here in Bensonville? That again, doesn't fix all cars, only cars that are his that he's selling. Pretty simple question.
Staff has been pretty good at their decisions and so has the CDC board. I'll bring it to our board, but typically we we side with staff and CDC. So any questions from our board?
What's the difference in the operations of the prior business compared to this business?
Tiger Auto?
Yeah.
So this space was built out, it had a, it had actually the framework for a paint booth. So I think Tiger Auto did full auto repair for the public. He's only trying to do auto repair for his own cars.
Has there been any complaints, Curtis, in the area with the, so far with the business there? Do we know of?
Yeah, I mean, we've had issues with with this business specifically in the past. You know, it's it's one of those things where it's either cleaning up the property or telling him that, you know, that you can't park vehicles outside, so we did have outdoor storage issues in the past. And to his credit, they did clean it up. I mean, he's kept a cleaner business in recent years. But we really did struggle with him to come in to get the special use. Once we caught him working on the vehicles, it took several months. So it's 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 been a tug and pole to get him to, you know, comply. So that's that's one of the bigger concerns is that we've, you know, we've had issues in the past, basically. You know, the the code changed, you know, so we did the big zoning code update in in twenty nineteen. So previously, we allowed for, we had two separate motor vehicle uses, minor and major. And so we would allow for minor in these districts. We've we've done away with that. The new code essentially does, and this is an I one district, this is light industrial. So we require special use in both I one and I two, but we generally require an acre of land for these types of uses because they have so many issues with outdoor storage and and just in general, just the spacing and how these establishments end up looking. So we haven't approved very many in multi-tenants. I think maybe one since that Marshall was actually on that case on Beeline. But we generally don't recommend approval in multi-tenant industrial anymore for auto repair uses, just because it's historically been an issue.
How long ago has it been since you've had a complaint?
This specific business?
Yeah, this specific business. How long has it been?
Yeah, I'd have to look it up, but yeah, I I mean, there's been definitely a history of correction notices delivered. I mean, I mean, even catching him working on the vehicles, you know, without the license, so. I don't, I can't, I don't know exactly off the top of my head, but there's there's been a track record.
I'm just wondering how long he's been clean.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, better, but I mean, even to get him to come in for the special use this last year or so was was kind of pulling teeth.
If I can make one comment, Mr. President. So perfect example is two eleven Beeline Drive. That was a client of mine. And before they bought that space, the prior owner that was doing auto repair out of there, it was a problem. If you looked at Google Maps, there were cars over the place and that was a type of activity that the village board didn't want, and that's one of the reasons I believe you changed your code. My client bought that business, and not all my clients are perfect, but he bought that business and said, this is going to be for overflow any, overflow only. And to date, it hasn't been a problem. So there are good Bensonville corporate clients and there's ones that aren't good. And with respect to Curtis saying that this one has been a problem, there was nothing nefarious with respect to, he always applied for a business license. He had the framework of a spray booth in there, so it's a logical mistake to think that I have a business license to do work. I have the state of, I have the sign off from staff that I provided to you that says auto repair and auto sales for him to think that he can do auto repairs under that same business license. It's not like he's coming into town and doing all this work without any kind of license. He had the license. Curtis keeps mentioning these past issues. I, my client's not, I mean, he's been had correction notices given and always responded to those correction notice. He's never been with me in front of this administrative hearing officer, getting citations for that that I'm aware of.
Yeah. Yeah, he's been in front of adjudication court.
How many times, Curtis?
Yeah, so, yes, we, we, um, the other, I do want to comment on Marshall's signing off on the the sales and repair. What do you refer, he's referring to the NAICS code, which isn't what we use in our zoning code for for uses. The, what is written on the business license was auto sales. There was no, there was no intent for ever doing repair here, so. That's a little, it's a little bit of a stretch. I know what he's, he's trying to say because they put, we use NICS to track what type of businesses are on our business licenses. He's trying to say that the NICS code uses, it it includes repair in that definition, but that's not what we use in our code. That doesn't dictate the use.
Thanks. So, call the roll?
Yes is a deny.
Yes is approving the ordinance that denies.
Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Because of the CDC's highly recommended because of not coming when it was complied, I'm going to have to say yes. I said yes.
Trustee Franz?
I would have to go with Rose and say yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
I've never been in front of an adjudication court. That's a lie, lie.
You're in roll call. There's no discussion. Please be silent.
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
I have a quick question. I know.
No, there's no comment during roll call. No question.
Okay.
What's your vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's six.
Motion carries. The ordinance is passed.
Lie. Tell them that. I've never, in seven years.
That's enough. That's enough.
I've never met anybody.
Under Finance, ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation limited tax bond series twenty twenty-five of the Village of Bensonville, Cookin, DuPage County, Illinois, and for the levy of direct tax sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on the bonds. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Good evening, Mr. President and Board of Trustees. Every three years, the village issues limited tax general obligation bonds. As part of the process, the village is required to hold a public hearing in accordance with the Bond Issuance Notification Act, which is known as BINA. This hearing took place on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, and no objections were raised during this session. An updated ordinance, which includes the results of the bond sales held on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, has been distributed to all the trustees. This ordinance is presented for consideration and approval at tonight's meeting for the adoption of the twenty twenty-five limited tax general obligation bonds. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. The ordinance is passed. Under Public Works, there's a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for the annual wastewater treatment plant, NPDES operating permit in the not to exceed amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second? Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion? Joe?
Yes, so this again is a request for a purchase order to pay our permit fees to the Illinois EPA. You're probably wondering what NPDES stands for? Or maybe not, but it's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. So again, basically, we clean up the water that goes into our creeks and this is our permit that allows us to do that. The cost of the permit every year is seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. We're usually invoiced in June or July. Last year, we paid our invoice one week late and the Illinois EPA charged us a forty-five dollar late fee and they would not waive it. So we wanted to be prepared, get that purchase order ready to go, so when we see the invoice, we can pay it on time. So staff does recommend approval.
Questions from the board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Two is a resolution authorizing the execution of a one-year contract extension for sludge hauling with Stewart Spreading in the not to exceed amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second? Joe, sludge hauling.
Yeah, so disposal of sludge is one of our largest operational components of running wastewater treatment plant. We basically get rid of all of the byproduct that we treat out of our wastewater before we send it to our streams. We've been under contract with Stewart Spreading as our hauler and scientist for the actual sludge hauling process since two thousand fourteen. Staff is requesting an extension of this contract. We had a mutually agreed upon CPI increase of three point zero five percent for the annual increase this year. We estimate that we generate about six thousand cubic yards of sludge each year, so that equates to about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar contract, and it's staff's recommendation to approve this extension.
Questions from the board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Three is a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase order with T-Mobile for the GPS tracking services in the not to exceed amount of thirteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, so we're requesting approval of a purchase order to T-Mobile for our annual GPS tracking. The village has been utilizing T-Mobile for the last seven years. The cost of the service is twelve dollars and sixty cents per vehicle per month. We do track about ninety vehicles in our fleet each year. The price has not changed since twenty seventeen. The total amount of the contract is thirteen thousand dollars, so we're requesting approval of that change order. Of that purchase order.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Four is a resolution authorizing the execution of a construction contract with Clean Cut Tree Services Incorporated of Grayslake, Illinois for the twenty twenty-five Addison Creek Tree and Vegetation Clearing Project in the not to exceed amount of one hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Joe, would you like to discuss?
Yeah, so staff's been working with Hayne Associates on a stream bank improvement concepts along Edison Creek from the Redmond Reservoir down to Grand Avenue. This runs right through the Sexton Dump Site. One of the project milestones was to perform a vegetation clearing project so we can eliminate all of the overgrowth that is along those creeks or along that creek in that area. We wanted to better visualize some potential improvements that we can make to the area. Nearly ninety percent of the vegetation along that creek bed is either invasive or non-native species. Hayne Associates assisted in the preparing of the bidding documents for the clearing project. We did advertise this and bids were open on January fourteenth. We had three contractors submit bids with Clean Cut Tree Services submitting the lowest bid in the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty cents. So it's staff's recommendation to approve this contract.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Five is a resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering agreement with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated, E E I, for lead service line replacement, L S L R assistance in the not to exceed amount of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Do we have discussion?
Yeah, so staff is looking to enter into an agreement with E E I to help us develop our lead service line replacement policies and also to apply for loans and principal forgiveness to fund lead service line replacement projects. As you may know, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, working through the Illinois Protection Agency, Environmental Protection Agency, has mandated that certain lead service lines be replaced if found over the next seventeen years. Staff has been satisfying requirements that have been part of this program in-house to date. We've identified approximately seven hundred potential lead service lines within the village. That's seven hundred of our forty-four thousand five hundred services in town. So our next step is really to develop a project plan to come up with projects over the next seventeen years that will eliminate all lead service from our system. The EPA has funding available through their public water supply loan program. That also comes with principal forgiveness while it's still there. So we would like to capitalize on any of that principal forgiveness that is basically free money to the Village of Bensonville to hopefully replace as many lead services as we can in the next five to seven years. In order to do so, again, certain documents are required by the EPA, so we're seeking consulting assistance to help us get through that process. We requested a proposal from E E I to provide the engineering assistance. Over the next few years, the proposal includes three main tasks. Task one is the project development plan that we can submit to the EPA for the loan program. The second task is lead service line replacement plan consultation, which will help us with our policy direction. So the village board will need to at some point decide how we're going to deal with and fund the replacement of public and private service lines. And then the last one is really just more policy framework and consultation. The cost of the work effort is thirty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars. We've worked with the E I before and staff does recommend approval.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Six is a resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one, final, two, and genetics.
Energetics.
Okay, for the twenty twenty-two Water Skata Replacement Project for an increase of fifteen thousand dollars for a final contract amount of one oh, one hundred one thousand nine hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a motion, a second. Joe, is twenty twenty-two correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Actually, so our Skata system is a technology that monitors our water distribution system, production system, as well as our wastewater treatment plant and our lift stations. It's a technology that allows us to run the operation without having to spend personnel costs twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. So back in twenty twenty-two, the village board approved a project with energetics to do an upgrade of our system. The system initially was installed back in two thousand fourteen, I believe. So this this included replacing some outdated controls, PLCs, computers, and also converting our communication from a serial communication to an Ethernet communication. During that project, we came across a number of challenges with the communication component of it, so it's why it's taken a couple of years to complete this project. We've had to do some moving around of certain antenna. We've had to do some introduction of repeaters in our system, so some of this extra work cost us about fifteen thousand dollars, but we finally have it dialed in. It's all working. Our communication is good and our Skata system is up and running as we expected. It did take us a couple of years to do it, but we are happy with the final results. Again, this is change order number one, final, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for a final cost of a hundred and one thousand nine hundred dollars, and staff does recommend approval.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Seven is a resolution authorizing the execution of a final balance balancing change order number one with Millennium Contracting Company for the Bryn Mawr Avenue and Virginal Drive Reconstruction Project for a decrease of two hundred thirty-four thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars thirty-five cents for revised final contract amount of two million nine hundred thirty-seven thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars sixty-five cents. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Joe, we like decreases. Want to explain?
Yep, so the Bryn Mawr Virginal Reconstruction Project was another complete industrial roadway reconstruction project. It included new concrete pavement, new concrete curb and gutter, apron sidewalks, streetlights, new water mains, sanitary sewer upgrades, and storm sewer upgrades. We finished this project late in twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-four, we really were working on finalizing punch list items and agreeing on final quantities. So we have reached that component now. The project is a one hundred percent complete and we have agreed on final quantities with the contractor who was Millennium Contractor, contracting company. Again, as you mentioned, it's a decrease in the amount of just over two hundred thirty-four thousand dollars for a final construction cost of two point nine three seven million dollars. So it is staff's recommendation to approve and put that money back into the TIF twelve.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Fry?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. On the recreation, a resolution approving a sales agreement with Nevco Scoreboards to replace the Edge on Jefferson West scoreboard in the not to exceed amount of fifty-one thousand forty-seven dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
Second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second. Sean?
Yeah, so the scoreboard on the west rank over at Jefferson Street is original to the building. It's over twenty-five years old and has reached the end of its useful life, life. For the past five years, we've been able to replace parts, but now those parts are longer manufactured.
For the past five years, we've been able to replace parts, but now those parts are longer manufactured. So in our community investment plan, we identified replacing this in the 2025 CIP budget as a source well joint purchasing business. They, we don't, we don't have to go out to public bid. Nevco provides scoreboards for schools, outdoor parks, ice arenas, and comes in well under budget.
Questions from our board? Call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee, uh, trusty Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Two is a resolution to approve an agreement for sound and lighting equipment for the music in the park, 2025 through 2027, with diversified audio group in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second, Sean?
Yeah, so the next four are going to be related to music in the park and Liberty Fest events. The village requested proposals for all of these different functions that we need for the music, music in the park and Liberty Fest. Diversified audio group was the low proposal for sound and lighting for music in the park at twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars per year. We were very happy with them. We've been with them for the past seven or eight years and we're going to continue another three-year agreement with them.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax? Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez? That's six.
Motion carries and the resolution is approved. Three is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement and purchase order with IRE Productions in the not exceeding amount of nineteen thousand five hundred for the staging for the 2025 through 2027 Music in the Park Concert Series. Is there a motion? You have a motion. You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second, Sean?
Yeah, so this is for the stage for Music in the Park. A little bit different than Liberty Fest where we separate out the stage from the sound and lighting. We received three proposals for this. One came in right around fifty-nine thousand, one came in around sixty thousand, and Air Productions came in at fifty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. The one that was close to them, just by fifty-nine thousand, had different equipment, led us to, give us some pause on the current stage and what we need. Again, this is a three-year deal and have been partners with them for years.
Questions from our board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Four is a resolution authorizing a contract with Air Productions for staging for Liberty Fest events for years 2025, 26, and 27 in the not exceeding amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred per year. Is there a motion to approve?
You have a motion.
You have a second.
Second.
Being a motion, a second, Sean?
Yeah, so this one's just a little bit different than the Music in the Park staging because this one also includes your audio and your lighting for Liberty Fest. They were the low bid and they proposed no increase over the next three years. So staff recommends approval.
Questions from the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee France?
Yes.
Trustee Frye?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?